Hello and welcome to the Monday, October 30th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 26, 2023 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can I please take role?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanningbeater?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heel?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here. We have a quorum. We'll now make a motion to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting where the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is a personnel matter. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back around 7:30. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, October 30th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. You're now back from executive session. Mr. Ecker, could you please take role?
Sure. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanningbeater?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heel?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here. We have a quorum. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to serve the Father, who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a plain and just throne. I would like to acknowledge the correspondence is listed, and we will move on to committee reports. I think we'll begin with HR.
Sure. The HR Committee met on October 18th from 4:00 to 5:30. We focused on a sick bank leave request, two new club proposals, review to policies, discuss substitute school nurse daily rates, talked about staff member recognition by the board, leaves of absences documentation on future board agendas, and then we moved into our Activity Fee Ad Hoc Committee, which we spent some time following up on the fall status. And that concluded our committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Operations?
Operations met earlier in the month and I reported out at the previous meeting.
Okay, great. And education, I believe Ben was not at education. Do you have somebody who'd like? I was also not at education. If anybody would like to speak to that? If not, I can read from the minutes if I can find them. One second. Education. So the items discussed, I'll just read the items discussed because I was there. First was the gifted and talented curriculum. This is October 17th. Yes, October gifted and talented curriculum was reviewed. We reviewed the district calendar, as well as we reviewed three policies for review, school parent and family engagement. Okay. We will now move, I think there's no other, we didn't have governance, so we are complete with committee reports. All right, we'll now move on to the staff recognition. This will be the most fun part of our meeting here. All right, so we, over the past couple of years, it's been brought up a couple of times by board members that we should be actively recognizing our staff who have done a great job, and there's so many. We decided to do this twice a year. I would say that Ms. Stats is the one that kind of championed this effort to get us moving in this direction, so I want to recognize Ms. Stats for that. And this has now turned into something that we're going to do twice a year, and we'll read something about some staff members that have been awarded some distinguished awards throughout the year. So first, I will start with Ms. Dr. Susan Radwan. Dr. Susan Radwan, you can stand up by the podium. Director of Special Services in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools has been awarded the 2023 Mary Ann Bono Administrator Award by Barbara and Ed Wilson, co-founders of Wilson Language Training. Mary Ann Bono Administrator Award is given to an administrator who is extremely committed to achieving literacy for all students, specifically with successful implementation of the Wilson Reading System within their school district. Dr. Radwan was congratulated for her dedication and commitment to the students who struggle with dyslexia and other reading disabilities. Congratulations to Dr. Radwan for winning this award.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything? Feel free. If not?
Thank you very much. I just also want to thank mostly all the teachers in Hillsborough. Really, this award, I appreciate getting this award, but without the teachers in Hillsborough to really do the legwork and really are the ones who are behind everything that we do for our students. So although I'm getting this award, really, it would be nothing without our teachers. So thank you to them. Thank you. And for Hillsborough for supporting all the initiatives that we do in special education. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we have actually two for Mr. Bob Fenster. Okay. The Organization of American Historians, OAH, announced that the Hillsborough High School teacher, Robert M. Fenster, is a recipient of the OAH 2023 Mary Kay Bon steel Tackow Teacher of the Year Award. This award is given annually for contributions made by pre-collegiate teachers to improve history education within the field of American history. The award was announced during OAH's 2023 Conference on American History. Mr. Fenster has taught in Hillsborough since 1993, where he has successfully engaged students while teaching US history and AP government and politics, and also moderating mock trial, Model UN, Model Congress, Podcasting Club, and Amnesty International. Mr. Fenster regularly challenges students to relate to topics personally and creatively when covering diversity, immigration, government, and citizenship, among other topics. He inspires students to actively engage their intellects and share their understanding and perspectives. Congratulations to Mr. Fenster for winning this award. Thank you. One more. Mr. Fenster was one of the four outstanding New Jersey secondary school teachers who were honored by Princeton University at its 2023 commencement. This is the 2023 Princeton University Prize for distinguished secondary school teaching. Mr. Fenster was awarded the Princeton Prize, which included a $3,000 donation for the school library. Among other highlights, Mr. Fenster was recognized for innovative approaches to teaching, including using a history lab approach to AP US government and politics, and US History One Honors classes, giving students ownership over their studies and allowing them to apply learning through creative means, including escape rooms, artistic collages, history game design, creating social media profiles for historic figures, and podcasting. Once again, congratulations to Mr. Fenster for winning this award and the 30 others that he's won recently. Thank you. All right, next we have Ian Evans. All right, Hillsborough Middle School, 7th grade literacy teacher Ian Evans was named the 2022-2023 Somerset County Teacher of the Year. Mr. Evans' passion for teaching stems from connecting to students on an individual basis, letting them know he has invested in their lives, according to school district officials. Evans' best attributes were listed at an awards ceremony as his reflective practice, thoughtfulness, willingness to listen, and creativity. Mr. Evans, who was the 2021-2022 Hillsborough Middle School Teacher of the Year, has taught here for 10 years. Throughout that time, he, his instructional leadership and personal impact on his students has been widely recognized by his colleagues, parents, and students, according to district officials, and is considered a mentor to both students and new teachers alike. Working with colleagues, Mr. Evans founded two new clubs, The Writer's House, to encourage young authors and poets and promote the sharing of creative writing in the school and HMS Cares and Extension of Borough Cares, a community-based coalition for anti-racist and equitable schools. Students in HMS Cares focus on building school community that is welcoming and supportive of the broad diversity of the student, of the district students. In addition to his work with students, Mr. Evans has presented staff training on bystander intervention in the district. In 2021, Mr. Evans was a co-presenter at the New Jersey State Equity Conference, speaking about the work he and his colleagues have done to advance social justice, equity, and inclusive learning environments in the school for the benefit of all students. Congratulations to Mr. Evans for winning this award. All right, Cindy Povall. Cindy Povall was recently named Somerset County Councilor of the Year for 2022-2023, and was honored at the May 23 Hillsborough Township Committee Meeting for her dedication and service to students. Ms. Povall, who has been a member of the Hillsborough School District for seven years, is the current president of the New Jersey School Counselor Association, previously served as a delegate to the American School Counseling Association, and was a conference presenter at the NJSCA Annual Spring Conference and NJCAC Annual Conference. In 2023, Ms. Povall was also awarded the Dr. J. Barry Mascaro Heart of a Counselor Award. The Keene University Counselor Education Department awarded this to two students who demonstrate that they have the heart of a counselor, confident, compassionate, courageous, and committed to becoming a lifelong, ever-evolving professional counselor, following in Dr. Mascari's footsteps. Congratulations to Ms. Povall for winning this award. All right, next is Anjana Iyer. All right, this is for the 2023 Finalists for Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Ms. Anjana Iyer was selected as a finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which are the highest honors bestowed by the United States Government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, and mathematics teaching. The award recognizes those teachers that have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. Finalists reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's teaching profession, and they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teachers on student achievement. Congratulations to Ms. Iyer for being selected as a finalist for this award. All right, next we have Ms. Amy Thompson. All right, Ms. Amy Thompson was selected as the 2022 School Counselor of the Year from the New Jersey Association for College Admissions Counseling. This award recognizes a school counselor who exemplifies excellence and dedication to serving the needs of students in the transition from high school to college, and exhibits sustained service in the college admissions field by providing exceptional support to students and peers, service to the association or service to the state, national, or allied associations. Congratulations to Ms. Thomas Thompson for winning this award. All right, last but certainly not least, Ms. Cassandra Shannon. This is in reference to the 2022 We Teachers Award. Ms. Cassandra Shannon, a We Teacher Award winner, teaches English language learners at Hillsborough Elementary School in New Jersey. Ms. Shannon deeply understands the unique challenges and struggles her students face. During the pandemic, these challenges have become even more, had become even more pronounced, with some parents out of work, many unable to speak English, and some unable to drive and access supplies needed for students' learning. She was able to purchase extra masks, hand sanitizer, and cleaning products to make sure her classroom is clean and safe, as well as snacks to give to children who had to skip breakfast or couldn't bring their own snacks to school. She was also able to put together kits for students for the summer to help them have fun and remember just to be kids. Congratulations to Ms. Shannon for winning this award. So once again, thank you to all of our award winners. It's a great achievement. Thank you very much. And the last item, or the only other item on my Board President's Report, is as a reminder to vote. That's next week, right? Next week. So mark your calendars if you haven't already. I know it's an off-year election. A lot of people don't tend to come out and vote, but we'd appreciate those to come support the district.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank each and every member of the Board of Education who decided to recognize staff members. I think it's great when my administration is able to do so, but it's another level when board members decide to recognize everyone. So thank you for doing that. And again, congratulations to those of you who have been recognized. As part of my superintendent's report tonight, there are two presentations, so it may be a little bit longer than usual. So I ask you to just have a little bit of patience, but I do have some important things to go over today. As you can see behind me, build borough back. You've heard a lot about that. If you see my car right now, it looks like it has polka dots all over it because I put plenty of magnets on it trying to gain some attention. And our build borough back effort started from my 100-day report that I submitted to the Board of Education, when I had the opportunity to look at the district functioning, our staffing levels, and get a sense of where we are and where we want to be. That report then turned into an effort for staffing, which is going to be put in front of the voters next Tuesday, November 7. And actually, you can start voting right now in the municipal building if you wanted to. I did, if you follow me on Twitter at, or X, at @SupBoltie. I already cast my ballots. But let me, just for a very big, broad overview, remind you of where we are and why. Starting in 2018, the state passed a new funding formula and law known as S2. Two-thirds of the state's school districts get more money, much more money. One-third of school districts in the state get less. We are in that one-third that is less, and that leads to a lot of problems that we have had today. And I know to a certain extent, sometimes, or today, we live in like a hyper-partisan world, and some of us may think, oh, if only the people who are on my side of the political spectrum or are the party that I vote for can get their, things are going to get fixed. I just want everybody to keep in mind, state cuts started under one governor who was of one party, and state cuts for Hillsborough have continued under another governor who is of another party. Also, if you look behind me on the board, most, in my mind, politicians, when they see 66% of people are happy with something, and 33% of people are unhappy with something, chances are they're going to side with the 66%. So I decided that, hey, I need to bring this to the people of Hillsborough, because we're really the people who care about Hillsborough. So while two-thirds of the state goes up with state funding and one-third of the state goes down, how about we look at Somerset County? Somerset County, 16 out of 17 school districts, state funding for the past five years has gone up, and you're going to be a little shocked as to how much. And one in Somerset County has gone down. As you know from what I have said, that is us. I've shown some of these before, from the first year of the new funding formula, the state aid cuts. You'll see behind me those in black, their numbers are going up. Those in red, the numbers are going down. So in the first year of the new state aid formula, Hillsborough lost over a half a million dollars. In the second year, we lost about three-quarters of a million dollars. Everybody else went up. In the third year, we lost another $700,000, while everybody else went up. In the fourth year, for some reason, there must have been a miscalculation in Franklin because they owed $33,000, which is kind of a drop in the bucket when you saw everything else had, but we lost another $1.4 million. And then this past year, we lost $913,000. We did get $600,000 of that restored, but initially, we were slated to lose $900,000. When you look at that in totality, this is the slide I want you to pay attention to for a second. How much extra state aid have other towns in our very own county received, and towns that border Hillsborough specifically are high? If you look at us, the people of Hillsborough, we've lost about $4.2 million, and we still have another year of this to go through, and look around the rest of Somerset County. That doesn't look fair to me, and I don't think Superman is coming to the State House to say, I must save Hillsborough. I must reconfigure this, when 16 districts in our county right now are very happy. When I go to superintendent's meetings, nobody's complaining about the school funding formula, except me. I do so vociferously and passionately, but I'm a very small minority right there. And if you look at those towns that border us, just keep that in mind. You've got an $8 million gap over that time period with Bridgewater, $12 million gap with Franklin, 16 with Mannville, 7.7 with Montgomery, and 7 million with Somerville. Some of those school districts look very different than us, but some of them look pretty similar. So what do we do? How can we possibly get around this? And that was part of what led to the build borough back effort. Although I might seem a little, hopefully even keel right now, this really bothers me, this slide behind me. It's outrageous, and I don't think we can let the state formula dictate the things that we are doing here in Hillsborough anymore, and hope that some altruistic politician gets elected and solves Hillsborough's problems. We can start to do that together. Next year's budget, we're projecting we're going to lose another $400,000. And for those of you who don't know how school funding works, why is it only a projection? Because although we are starting to work on our budget right now in October, and we'll work on it for many months, and we will come to the board with a tentative budget in April. Mr. Ecker, when does the budget software open that the state tells us how much we're getting cut? Approximately?
Yeah, that is actually after the Governor's Budget Address, which is the last Tuesday in February.
Okay, so we will find out this variable, which we have a guess, after the last Tuesday in February. So to a certain extent, we're flying blind. We think this is the number, but could it be anything? It really could. But again, it's another hit based on top of these numbers that I showed you right here. Some people might be like, well, what is this school formula? Well, how did this happen? What's going on? I had mentioned this before, that when S2 came, remember, 66% of school districts were happy. They don't really care about the formula. One-third of school districts weren't happy. So when school districts started asking, what's the formula? What's the formula? Department of Education said, we'll get back to you. Okay, came back. What's the formula? Eventually, Tom's River had to sue to get the formula, and it's still not abundantly clear. Explanations have been given, but there are still variables that don't make a lot of sense. And I'm not going to bore you with those details, but I just want to let you know that there's advocacy going on from superintendents like myself, because again, we think it's pretty unfair to be that obtuse or unclear with a state formula. When it comes to needing more in town, and we're asking that of the taxpayers, there is usually a temptation to say, well, how about we cut administration? If we cut administration, we can keep everything we have. Look behind me on this slide. This is the administrative per pupil costs in all of Somerset County. Hillsborough already spends the least amount of money on administration per pupil by hundreds of dollars compared to anybody else in Somerset County. As these cuts happen, we've already cut the administration. We are down low. We're already at a deficit. But you might say, hey, Mike, that's great that you keep talking about the county, but there are some bigger schools in the county, there are some smaller schools in the county. Let's talk about schools like you throughout the state. Same size, same socioeconomic status. What does your administration look like compared to them? We are again last in the state when it comes to administrative salaries and benefits that is spent per pupil. We have already cut where we can cut. We have had people come here and say, hey, we don't have enough supplies. We don't have enough administration. The reason why we don't have those things is because of this S2 and this school funding. We have cut so we could keep the people in front of our kids that need to be in front of our kids. I've said this, Hillsborough for years before I got here was doing more with less, and a credit to my teachers and everybody who has supported them. We're now at a point where we're doing expected with the amount we have, and I am worried now that we are going to be doing less with less. Hence, it's time to build borough back. And the question is, why now? I'm a superintendent here 10 months. Yes, I've lived here since 1999, maybe longer than some of you. I'm a Hillsborough person. I don't know many school districts that their superintendent and their assistant superintendent are Hillsborough people. We don't come from another town and come here and work and leave. We live here, and we breathe here, and we want this place to be successful. I've had three kids graduate from here. One more is going to be graduating this year. So the question is, even though I'm ingrained here, I'm superintendent 10 months, why now? My answer? Because math. I was hoping for a chuckle or two with that. But math. I walked into circumstances where I think everybody behind me can agree with these two mathematical equations. One number is bigger than another number. I walked into a situation where even though we are cutting, we have more building in town, we have more ratables in town. So the taxes that support the district are spread out among more taxpayers, and that's what's called your tax rate going down. Tax rates in town, it's a fact, you can look at your own papers now, tax rates have gone down. If tax rates were going up, I would be crazy to come to you right now and say, hey, can you spend more? And I guarantee you raise your taxes. Tax rates are going down, so there could be a minimal amount of impact. So now is the right time to start building borough back. And the two things that we really were talking about here is about school security, and I brought this up a few different presentations, talking about who's in charge of our security at our schools, and I showed you the numbers, that for less than around $930,000, we can add school security personnel and a security coordinator to keep eyes on our students, on our staff members, on our community members. It's a need here in Hillsborough, and as a parent, it's needed. The second question that we talked about was because of all these cuts, I was gone for several years from Hillsborough, even though I'm a long-term Hillsborough person. Lost over 50 certificated staff positions, and I've heard teachers come up to the podium, I've heard Mr. Googoo come up to the podium. When I wasn't here, that it has to stop. We have to stop cutting staff members. But you were forced to be put in such a situation. So the board very bravely decided, hey, let's start to add some of those back, and let's bring back 20 certificated staff positions for a price tag of around $1.9 million. And I have tried to be ultimately transparent in telling you what those positions are going to be. I've been around town, I've gotten a chance to meet with some home and school associations, I have met the senior group at Gateway Community, and have been very specific as to what these 20 positions will be. And there's QR codes behind me, this will be posted tomorrow, to take a look at this, to see if you want more details. So they're there. They're K-12, they're teachers, they're mental health supports, they're everything that our students need in order to be successful, and it's some of what Hillsborough was robbed of because of, I think, an unfair funding formula. When people wanted to know, well, how is this going to affect me? We put a tax calculator on our website, where the only thing you need to figure that out are two pieces of paper, your tax statement from last year from the township, and your tax statement from this year. We have an online calculator where you can calculate and see, are your taxes going down? Are they going up, or are they staying relatively the same? The mathematical fact is, if your house was assessed at the same value, now, it didn't happen for everybody, but if it's assessed at the same value, your taxes are going down, guaranteed, even if both questions pass. If the assessment of your home went up, there's a little bit of work you have to do. My uncle told me, took him two minutes to figure out whether he was paying more or less, but it's easy for you to do. Here's a sample. I won't bore you again with the math, but here's a house that they had in a $700,000 assessed value, what their taxes were last year, and what they would be this year, and then with the proposal. So a $700,000 house, where the assessed value stayed the same, right now, their taxes would be going down $490. If they voted yes on both proposals, their taxes would still be going down $231. So the math works out. Again, if your assessed value has changed, you have to figure that out for your own, but this could be a win-win for this community. We could keep our taxes stable, low, some people receiving tax cuts, or lower taxes, I shouldn't say, not a tax cut, lower taxes, and we can get these resources. But you may say, Mike, I lost those two pieces of paper. I don't have my tax statement from this year. I don't have it from last year. I don't know what my assessed value was, so I went hunting online, and I found where you can go plug your information in, and you can find all of the information about your assessments from both years. So I will have this up on the website tomorrow, too, so you can figure out all of the financial impact to you. So we have the opportunity to build back borough in a fiscally responsible way because of timing. I walked in superintendent a very lucky position where our tax rates were going down, and we can do this for our kids. Part of the problem that some people will say is that, well, the S2 funding, that's only one more year, right? You're only getting cut $400,000. You're getting cut one more year. That's right, S2 expires, and then the state has to figure out how they're funding schools all over. and then the state has to figure out how they're funding schools all over again. So after that one more year, are we going up, are we going down? Nobody knows. We could be on a trajectory continuing to go down. So the time right now is to do this, is to build Borough back. Because what I don't want to do is I do not want to see, this is a proud community, you're proud people, these are proud schools. I do not want to cede any kind of local control that we have over our school district to the state. Because the state says, you have to do things this way. If we continuously cut and cut and cut and cut and cut down to the bone, what do we have to do? We have to do the minimal things the state says. We do that no matter what. And in Hillsborough, what have we done in the past? We've offered a whole lot of things on top of that. So what are the things we can cut? Can we cut the things that the state says we have to do? No. We cut all those extra things that make Hillsborough Hillsborough. And I've been in other school districts. I have worked in Pennsylvania, I have worked in Woodbridge Township, I've worked in Florham Park, Hillsborough for a long time, I've worked in Princeton, I've worked in Moorestown. I came back to Hillsborough because this is the best place that I have ever worked. But I've heard some interesting things said in other school districts that I don't ever want to hear from here. We should not become a state minimally compliant district, and that's where we're headed due to school funding if we don't decide to make a change, which we can do together. I don't want to hear things I've heard in other school districts. I don't want to hear, I know other schools have security, but we can't afford it. I know your student is performing at a lower level than we would like, but he or she isn't the lowest in the class, so I have to put the resources over there. Your kid's low, but not low enough. I know you want certain course offerings while in high school, but the state says you don't need those. We're going to give you what the state says you need to graduate. And if you need other things, sorry, state says you don't need that. Lower class sizes are a luxury to have. I'm not saying I believe that, I'm saying this is what I've heard. And technically, as long as we're not violating the fire code, that's the amount of students that can be in the class. That is not educationally feasible. What I don't want to see is I don't want to see administrative turnover. I don't want to see Hillsborough become a stepping stone district where someone gets Hillsborough on their resume and then moves on, and talented administrators who are supporting our teachers leave, which then in turn, and we've seen this in the recent past, talented staff members leave. I want there to be hope out there for everyone. And the most important thing, too, for everybody, whether you have kids in the schools or not, or aren't connected to the schools, neighboring towns getting increased aid, millions and millions and millions of dollars more. They can pass us educationally and economically. And those towns eventually are going to become more desirable to live in, and then that is going to affect our property values. I don't want that to happen here in Hillsborough. And in 10 months, yeah, in 10 months here as superintendent, I'm kind of putting a lot out on the line that we have the opportunity to vote on two separate questions, one for security, one for staffing, and it's only going to benefit the district at a minimal tax impact to everyone. What I can also tell you is this board was courageous in partnering with me on this, and I thank them, and I am not going to recommend, like, if this goes down, I'm not going to say, let's try it again next year. Because my promise to you was, I did this because tax rates are going lower. I can't guarantee that next year. And I'm not going to bring something in front of the taxpayers like this if I know it's going to harm us economically. We have our chance, we can build back Borough, vote on November 7th. Even whatever you're voting for, we live in a democracy. It's one of the most precious things that we have, is your right to vote. You can go out and vote on November 7th, you can go out and vote right now at the, yes, you can, right now, I think later, no, maybe not right now. But you can vote between, I think, 10 and 7, or 10 and 6, at the municipal building. Just make some time out of your day to vote. Please consider helping us build Borough back, because I want this place to be the proud place and the great place that three of my kids got a fantastic education, and one is graduating shortly, and I want all kids in Hillsborough to have the same opportunities that they had. Sorry, I was a little long-winded, but this is something I'm very passionate about, and this is our chance. We're one week away from getting some really great stuff done, and I want to thank the board for supporting me on that. All of that being said, thank you for your attention. And Dr. Feltry now is ready to talk about our spring NJSLA assessment results, and those will be up on the screen behind me shortly. And Dr. Feltry, I will try to keep up with you as you go along.
Okay, and I will try to be as passionate as you are, but I'm not sure the board and the community are.
Quite the same, but you're best.
Exactly, exactly. So the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments were administered in English Language, Arts, Math, and Science during the spring, during May, this past spring. And we received the scores in late August, and the individual student reports were sent to parents and guardians in September. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessments measure how well students meet the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which specify what students are expected to learn in each content area. So this table has a lot of information, but I'll try to break it down for you. Students in grades 3 through 9 are required to take the NJSLA English Language Arts. The NJSLA ELA focuses on reading and comprehending a range of sufficiently complex texts independently and writing effectively when using and/or analyzing texts. This table displays the number of students who took the ELA assessment as well as their performance. This table compares student performance on 2022 and 2023 assessments. The last two columns show the change in Level 1 and Level 2 from 22 to 23, where students are not meeting and partially meeting expectations, as well as the change in Level 4 and Level 5 from 22, 2022 to 2023, where students are meeting and exceeding expectations. We would like to see a decrease in the percentage of students not meeting and partially meeting expectations from year to year, and an increase in the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations from year to year. We acknowledge that it will take more than one year to shore up the pandemic learning gaps, and therefore have supported our students with targeted intervention during the school day, wraparound services, and summer programming. We will continue to offer wraparound services and summer programming through September of 2024, when the ESSER funds will have been expended. This next table compares the change in performance of students on the NJSLA ELA assessments from 2022 to 2023 to the state percentages. In the best-case scenario, we would have seen a greater decrease in the percentage of students scoring at Level 1 and Level 2 than the state, or a lesser increase in the percentage of students scoring at a Level 1 and Level 2 at the state. Additionally, we would like to see a greater change in the percentage of students scoring at Levels 4 and 5 than the state. The next three slides compare Hillsborough student performance on the NJSLA ELA assessments to the state performance percentages in both 2022 and 2023 for each of the proficiency levels. On this slide, numbers colored green indicate that a lower percentage of Hillsborough students performed at Levels 1 and 2 in both 2022 and 2023, indicating that we had fewer students than the state average not yet meeting or partially meeting expectations, which is what we would like to see. On this slide, numbers colored green indicate that a lower percentage of Hillsborough students performed at Level 3 than the state in both 2022 and 2023, and a greater number of Hillsborough students performed at Level 4 than the state. The district numbers colored black that are above the state average for Level 3 might indicate a greater number of students have moved from Level 1 and Level 2 to Level 3, and may not necessarily indicate poorer performance than the state. On this slide, numbers colored green indicate that a greater number of Hillsborough students performed at Level 5 than the state. The district number colored black may not be statistically different from the state average, and the number in red indicates that we are below the state average for this grade level in terms of exceeding expectations on the NJSLA ELA. This table displays student performance results on the NJSLA ELA for 2022 and 2023, with particular emphasis on the percentage of students who met and exceeded expectations, thereby sufficiently demonstrating mastery of the ELA standards at each tested grade level. This is a graph comparing student performance on the NJSLA ELA by program for both 2022 and 2023. And this is a graph comparing student performance on the NJSLA ELA by race for both 2022 and 2023. Now we'll move on to math. Something to note in the mathematics portion, grade 8 data. Some students in grade 8 participated in Algebra 1, and some participated in Geometry. Hence, the math 8 outcomes are not representative of the whole 8th grade, you know, performance at the grade level, all of 8th grade. Students in grades 11 and 12 were not included in the Algebra 1, 2, and Geometry data, it was freshman. So students in grades 3 through Algebra 2 are required to take the NJSLA Mathematics. This table displays the number of students who took the mathematics assessments as well as their performance. The NJSLA Math focused on applying skills and concepts, understanding multi-step problems that require abstract reasoning, and modeling real-world problems with precision, perseverance, and strategic use of tools. This table compares student performance on the 2022-2023 NJSLA Math Assessments. As with the analogous NJSLA ELA table, the last two columns of this table show the change in Level 1 and Level 2 from 2022 to 2023, where students are not meeting and partially meeting expectations, as well as the change in Level 4 and Level 5 from 2022 to 2023, where students are meeting and exceeding expectations. Again, we would like to see a decrease in the percentage of students not meeting and partially meeting expectations from year to year, and an increase in the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations from year to year. As with the case of ELA, we acknowledge that it will take more than one year to shore up the pandemic learning gaps in math, and therefore have supported our students with targeted intervention during the school day, wraparound services, and summer programming. And we will continue to offer the wraparound services and summer programming through September 2024, when ESSER funds will have been expended. This table compares the change in performance of students on the NJSLA Math Assessments from 2022 to 2023 to the state percentages. In the best-case scenario, we would have seen a greater decrease in the percentage of students scoring at Level 1 and Level 2 than the state, or a lesser increase in the percentage of students scoring at Level 1 and Level 2. Additionally, we would like to see a greater change in the percentage of students scoring at Levels 4 and 5 than the state. The next three slides compare student performance on the NJSLA Math Assessments to state performance percentages for both 2022 and 2023 for each of the proficiency levels. On this slide, again, the numbers colored green indicate that a lower percentage of Hillsborough students performed at Levels 1 and 2 in both 2022 and 2023, indicating that we had fewer students than the state average not yet meeting or partially meeting expectations, which again, is what we would like to see. On this slide, numbers colored green indicate that a greater number of Hillsborough students performed, sorry. Are you on 3 and 4? Skipped ahead. On this slide, numbers colored green indicate that a lower percentage of Hillsborough students performed at Level 3 than the state in both 2022 and 2023, and a greater number of students performed at Level 4 than the state. The district numbers colored black that are above the state average for Level 3 might again indicate a greater number of students moving from Level 1 and Level 2, as opposed to indicating poorer performance than the state. On this slide, the numbers colored green indicate a greater number of Hillsborough students performing at Level 5 than the state. The district number colored black may not be statistically different from the state average, and the number in red indicates that we are below the state average for this grade level in terms of exceeding expectations on the NJSLA Math. This table displays student performance results on the NJSLA Math for 2022 and 2023, with particular emphasis on the percentage of students who met and exceeded expectations, thereby sufficiently demonstrating mastery of the math standards at each tested grade level. This graph compares student performance on the NJSLA Math by program for both 2022 and 2023. And this graph compares student performance on the NJSLA Math by race for both 2022 and 2023. In Science, it changes slightly. Students in grades 5, 8, and 11 are required to take the NJSLA Science. This table displays the number of students who took the Science Assessment as well as their performance. The NJSLA Science measures student proficiency in scientific and engineering practices in the context of cross-cutting concepts and disciplinary core ideas. This table compares student performance on the 2022-2023 NJSLA Science Assessments, with the last two columns showing the change in Level 1 and Level 2 from 2022 to 2023, where students are below proficient and nearing proficiency, as well as a change in Level 3 and Level 4 from 2022 to 2023, where students are proficient and demonstrating advanced proficiency. We would like to see a decrease in the percentage of students who are below proficient and nearing proficiency from year to year, and an increase in the percentage of students who are proficient or advanced proficient from year to year. We again acknowledge it will take more than one year to shore up the pandemic learning gaps, and therefore, we will be supporting our students with wraparound services through September 2024 using ESSER funds. The next three slides compare, well, actually, it's the next two slides, apologize. The next two slides compare student performance on the NJSLA Science Assessments to the state performance percentages in both 2022 and 2023 for each of the proficiency levels. On this slide, numbers colored in green indicate that a lower percentage of Hillsborough students performed at Levels 1 and 2 in both 2022 and 2023, indicating that we had fewer students than the state not yet meeting or partially meeting, or below proficient or nearing proficiency, which is what we would like to see. The district numbers colored black that are above the state average might indicate a greater number of students moving from Level 1 to Level 2 than the state average, and may not necessarily indicate poorer performance than the state. And on this slide, the numbers colored green indicate that a greater number of Hillsborough students performed at Levels 3 and 4 than the state, meaning that a greater number were proficient or demonstrating advanced proficiency, which is what we would like to see. This table displays student performance on the results of the NJSLA Science from 2024, 2022 and 2023, with particular emphasis on the percentage of students who were proficient and advanced proficient, thereby sufficiently demonstrating mastery of the Science Standards at each tested grade level. This is a graph comparing student performance on the NJSLA Science by program for both 2022 and 2023. And this is a graph comparing student performance on the NJSLA Science by race for both 2022 and 2023. To protect student confidentiality, performance is only reported for those groups who have greater than 10 students who tested. So you notice this graph looks slightly different than the ELA and the Math ones. Some notable achievements that we saw with our assessment results is the number of students meeting and exceeding expectations increased from 2022 to 2023 in most grade levels across all three of the NJSLA Assessments. And for the majority of grade levels and assessments, Hillsborough students outperformed the state average, which is what we would love to see. And then for our intervention strategies, we have targeted intervention at the K-8 level, including response to intervention services, wraparound tutoring, and ESSER-funded summer school. We also have peer-to-peer mentoring in math at the high school, and a focus on teaching to the edges. We are working on expanding the tutoring services at the high school to include Science and potentially ELA. So, and that concludes my assessment report for tonight.
Quite fashion. You beat me to it. You beat me to it.
I think we did well.
And you know, if I can hearken back just to my presentation just for a second. When it comes to things that the state says you have to do, this is one of the things that Dr. Feltry, the state says, we must present this to public. So again, thank you, Dr. Feltry. I just don't want us to become a school district that only does the things that the state tells us we have to do. We have a lot more enriching things that we can do. So that was exceptionally long, and I appreciate your patience. And Mr. President, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two items here. A motion to approve minutes from Executive Session 10923, and a motion to approve minutes from Regular Public Meeting 10923. Can I get a motion in a second?
So I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing them, we'll move to all. Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then move to the first public comment, public input on the action agenda and the 2024-2025 budget comments. Be very much welcome in the public. During board meetings, there'll be two, three-minute periods of time. The meeting will be open public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about any item that'll list on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may have been concerned to the residents of the school district as provided of 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. An instance where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board, president, or superintendent will address the comment. Maybe times one member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions, kind of know the Public Mise Act, and vice versa, public employees encompass therein, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Hi, Amy Salinger, AKA treasurer and teacher here at Otten Road School. I had a comment on two items, but I think one of them might have been removed. It was from Section 12 for an interim superintendent appointment. Was that removed? I know that's a question.
I'm sorry, what was the?
There was, when I looked at the agenda on Friday, in the human resources section, there was an appointment.
Supervisor versus, I thought you said superintendent.
Sorry, no, for, sorry, I might have said superintendent.
It has been removed for further discussion at the HR.
Okay, all right, thank you, and I won't comment on that. I am commenting on 11.7, the Gifted and Talented Framework. I haven't read through it all, because I just, but I focus on Grade 6, because that's the grade that I teach, but it appears they're all structured the same. It looks like there are several units. Some of them are 20 days, some are 50 days. At least in the sixth grade one, there were at least two 50-day units. So I'm, you know, I didn't do the exact total, but it looked like it was totaling close to 180 days. So is this supposed to be something that's happening daily for those students? Again, I think I've asked this before, which staff is to be implementing this and during which classes? Because since the one presentation we got, I think, back in the spring, we still haven't gotten any information about how this is exactly going to be implemented. I've asked, I know I've been at this podium asking similar questions with other action items, that it appears there's going to be some kind of significant impact on staff, and yet, you know, when I contact them, everyone's like, I'm not sure, I don't know. And I did that with this action item as well. So I know it's on for approval tonight, but again, just clarity with, once this goes through, how it gets implemented, when, by who, during which classes for these students, that's going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Linda Foo-Fung, Hillsborough resident and also heiress HSA treasurer. I'm talking about the agenda 11.8 for 2024 to 2025 school calendar. I would like to propose the board and parents in consideration for the Lunar New Year to be added into the calendar. Lunar New Year is also known as Chinese New Year, if many of you probably have heard. And this holiday is celebrated by East Asian descendants from China, Korea, Vietnam, Malaysia, Hong Kong, and many more. In our neighboring district, Bridgewater and other New Jersey school has already included this holiday to be part of the calendar to demonstrate inclusion and diversity. And as most Hillsborough elementary school have learned about the holiday in their Chinese-language classes, I would like to invite the board to also include this traditional holiday and to be celebrated and recognized by all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue Hillsborough Education Association. Wanted to comment on item 14.1, specifically the three policies listed, 24, 15, and then the subsequent subbullets that follow on each one. I realize that a lot of these policies are governed by, you know, ESEA, and there's aspects under federal law that we have to put into place. But a quick search of other surrounding districts, even in other states, shows that we're taking it to the nth degree. We're adding stuff into it well beyond what many other places have. And in doing so, we're tiptoeing into a dangerous area where perhaps we're touching upon terms and conditions of employment. So yet again, I'm up here to speak to a policy that I'm concerned about, that I'm learning about from a board agenda, where we first became aware of some of these points when a contract was handed out in a school. We didn't know that there was going to be board policy put into place that could arguably be used to discipline staff members. And we expressed concerns about that, brought that forward, and didn't fully get answers on that. And now I come to find out that it's actually being implemented in a third of our buildings as policy. And, you know, aside from those aspects of it, there's facets that, you know, we have certain things that are contrary to what's put in there. We're supposed to give homework every night, but then we're told that homework every night in elementary schools isn't appropriate. We said the homework has to be meaningful, but we don't have mechanisms in place to make it meaningful because of certain policies that are in place that undercut our ability to do so. There's also aspects of it where the staff section has 12 points, nine or 10 of them are all directly related to teaching. There's very few that touch upon administration within there. And in fact, when the compacts went out in the school that we questioned, there was no line for principals to sign it. There was a line for staff, there was a line for students, and there was a line for parents. So how is this a school-wide thing if it only falls on three stakeholders? Furthermore, it focuses on, it emphasizes collaborative decision-making to improve learning. Yet where is that collaboration? Why am I learning about this from an agenda? Why did I express concerns about this to have them not answered, to find out that it's being moved into being policy? So those are things that I think we really have to focus upon, because we're starting this semi-concerning pattern, from my perspective, of implementing policies that I find out about the day before the board agenda goes live, or the day the board agenda goes live, we express concerns about it, and they end up here anyway. And I don't hold that against the board. You get what's brought to you. I recognize that fully. And I also recognize that much of this policy is aspirational and actually is good, but it could be better if we actually worked together on it, not just a finite group of people who made a recommendation from the bullet lists that the federal government gives. Because there's aspects of the parent section that are inadvertently, I'll be done in two seconds, there's aspects of the parent section that are inadvertently economically elitist. We're telling parents in Title I schools that you need to get proper medical care. What if they don't have insurance? We're telling them, you have to have a quiet place in your house for the kid to work. What if there isn't one? Because it just doesn't allow for it. We also have a facet in the parent section that says they need to volunteer. So a parent who works multiple jobs and possibly can't volunteer is going to have to feel lesser or feel like they're failing this policy because they can't do that? I think we can all do better if we actually embrace the aspect of that policy that talks about collaborative decision-making to improve learning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, we are HHS's FRC Team 75, the Robo-Raiders. As our season starts, we would like to tell you on numerous successes we have seen so far. During the summer and our preseason, we hosted and participated in multiple events. To begin, at the Rotary Fair, we set up a booth and let little kids play with their robot and spread the word about our team to interested visitors. We also volunteered at setup and cleanup around the Rotary Fair, who are one of our sponsors, and we helped it run smoothly. Another extremely successful project that we held this year was our Junior Raiders Summer Camp. We held this at Amsterdam Elementary School, and at this program, children K to 4 were engaged in interactive engineering activities that solved problems and supported collaboration and teamwork. Hundreds of kids joined and had an amazing time. Bringing us to the start of our year, we had a strong crowd of returning members consistently participating in meetings and aiding in the setup process for new members to join. We had an interest meeting that attracted loads of new underclassmen who were excited to learn about our team, and our open house was packed with interested new students and their parents. The start of our year has officially kicked off without us even having our official kickoff Leading us to one of our more substantial events of the year, Team 75 participated in the RBSTS event hosted in the Bridgewater Commons Mall, along with many other New Jersey FRC teams. We had the honor of engaging in competition with so many other incredible teams and showcasing our robot from the 2022 to 2023 year. The competition was publicly available for the entire mall to watch, and as a result, attracted a huge crowd. Plus, with our interactive steam stations, a large number of eager and enthusiastic kids had fun with science experiments and exhibits that applied fascinating science concepts in interesting and easy-to-approach ways. We also got to do FLL workshops for 14 FLL teams in New Jersey to engage and lure kids to join FLL teams. RBSTS is and continues to be one of the most important steam events that raises the impact of the Robo-Raiders on our community, and we couldn't be prouder to be a part of it. We express our sincerest gratitude to our supporters, volunteers, mentors, and leadership for being able to make this season a success and for providing even more steam opportunities to both the team and the district. We are so excited to start this year's build season with new leadership, new members, and new mindsets, and we can't wait for Boroblast, our upcoming FLL event that we're hosting at the high school. Thank you so much for your support and time, and have a great evening. And we have a plaque that we'd actually like to give you, so.
Hello, Leisha Guevarbales, I live in Hillsborough. Also, they had an amazing thing also for fifth and sixth graders at Amsterdam as well. They actually had an opportunity to try out the FLL for a week for each session. Anyway, I'm here to talk about two things, the calendar being one and Gifted and Talented being the second. So I asked friends to review the calendar. Thank you for sharing it. And these are some of the comments that friends mentioned. So, and also comparing to what Bridgewater is doing. So, one, and I realize that we have five in-service days, whereas Bridgewater seems to have three. So December 23rd, it would be really lovely if that would just be a complete day off, so you could just take the whole week off. January, again, for the Lunar New Year. Spring break could be nice. I'm not sure if there's any other holidays besides Good Friday and Easter, but if not, it'd be nice to have it perhaps start on Good Friday and go through the next week to include Passover. Rosh Hashanah is a two-day holy holiday. And I think that might be about it mostly. Then also with Gifted and Talented, I haven't reviewed all of the paperwork, but I know in talking to Mr. Nell, it sounds like the Tier 3 might be pulled out for individual work, as well as with peers. And I just think it's really lovely for kids of all grades to be able to work with peers and to be able to bounce ideas off of each other. So I definitely want to encourage that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing your other comments, I'll open up to the board if they want to make any comments or anything before the board votes. Miss Nurse?
I'm not sure if it's, I do this now, but I would also, just looking at the district calendar, we didn't talk about it in HR. I think it maybe just stayed in education. I think that's the procedures that we do. But the 23rd did jump off, jump out at me, December. I'm not sure if this was collaboration between all the stakeholders. I'm not sure where that process started, but to me, it's just, as a teacher, I question, is this a have-to? And I know, and looking at the calendar and where we're trying to be in June, I completely understand that, but if there are other options, I just feel that there are going to be plenty of children missing. So I'm not sure how effective that day would be, unless, you know, the staff thinks otherwise if this was a collaboration. Also, I didn't realize about Passover being just a week away from where we are scheduled out, but I know that we try to coordinate if at all possible. I know it looks very late already in April for spring break, so I'm sure that was in the decision, but I'm just not sure if those were discussions that took place already and you felt that, or whoever was in charge felt that this was the best that we could do or not. So anybody who worked on it would be great.
I can just speak to the process briefly. We had put together a template, a first-round calendar, and brought to the Education Committee, and the next thing we did was we sent it out to HEA leadership, as well as HPSA leadership, where everybody got a chance to provide the input. We then sent the input, I think, back to the entire Education Committee and said, what do you think, based on HEA input as well as HPSA input? We then drafted two calendars, the original one and the one that included all the HPSA and HEA input. So you had the administration and all the members of the HEA. And what we came up with was, I think we included, can you correct me if I'm wrong, we included all of the input from both HPSA and the HEA, and in including that, you know, it's kind of like a puzzle, there's only so many days you can have. This is what we came up with. So I think that everything that was suggested to us from the HEA and the HPSA was included. Then we had a further discussion about that at Education, along with a whole list of ancillary things, and what else can we potentially include? And we landed on this for the board's consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Miss Nurse?
First, I'd like to congratulate all the honorees tonight for their achievements. And I want to thank Mr. Volpe for his passion and transparency and specificity. I was worried I wouldn't be able to say that word right, regarding the referendum questions, because that will require that your feet won't be held to the fire, I guess the boards as well, which is good, you know, as opposed to hiding behind vagueness in the promise that they will pass. And regarding some commentary from the public about collaboration, I think I've said this quote before, the former New Jersey School Board Association Executive Director, Dr. Lawrence Feinsa, said, quote, "The best decisions are always made by those closest to kids."
Thank you. Miss Nurse?
I'm sorry, I do have one more, just in the comments about the policy and taking a closer look. I know that it's up for the first reading for 14.1, and it sounds like maybe some of the Education Committee was not available on that education date. So I think if we maybe just look at that, if you're on the Education Committee or the other committees that are supposed to be doing the first reading, just try to take a look through the lens of the comments that were made, so we can see that we have everything that we need, but maybe, because I definitely can understand where even like students and how we can, how we would even uphold such a policy with try your best to do this and the wording, we might need to take a closer look at.
Yeah, if I can just add to that, too. When we talked about it at Education Committee, those items are aspirational. I do hear Mr. Goodhue's concerns, but I want to speak to process as well as collaboration. We have two readings for all of our policies for this exact reason. It is hard to get everybody on board for some version of the first policy. So we put a first policy out there. We've heard feedback and input. We will take that feedback and input in. We can even have further meetings with people if we need be. We can bring it back to committee, and then we can bring it back for second reading. So the whole intent of having two readings for a policy is to get feedback, and I think we've heard some tonight. We can discuss that further?
Can I get some comments?
Oh, please, sure, yes.
So something that most will probably not know is the compacts that are part of this were done with teachers, parents, and the administration. So as part of the cap from the collaborative federal monitoring, we had to increase our family engagement at our Title I schools and have a parent meeting where this was all discussed, and then every year we have to approve it. So that's why we're going through this. So with the collaboration piece, it was with the parents and the teachers of the schools in the Title I schools, because we got cited, for lack of better expression, that they all read the same, and since there are three different populations of students, that we needed to engage with the families. So there was collaboration with the families of those schools to come up with the compacts and the language that are in there, which is why it's slightly different in three schools.
I have a question about 14.2, if I may. My job.
Mr. Davis, go ahead.
There are two items in there about healthy workplace, and I just, I don't understand why we need that.
I think it's always good to have professional expectations laid out, and also at times. I think it's always good to have professional expectations laid out, and also, at times, we may need to refer to these. If for, if it's dealing with staff to staff, staff to administration, I kind of want to have expectations clear. To your point, Mr. Davis, I think what you're implying is shouldn't people in general know how to work in a healthy workplace with each other without there being a policy? I don't necessarily disagree with that sentiment. However, it is best practice to have your expectations clear moving forward, and that's truly the intent.
Any other comment before we move to the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
Oh, okay. Action agenda. Yes, for the action agenda. In the area of education, I would ask for the board's consideration of the following motions. Approving professional and travel-related expenses, affirming the superintendent's HIB determination, approving the field trip destination, approving overnight trips, approving PSAT proctor, approving memorandum of understanding between Princeton University Teacher Preparation Program and Hillsborough, approving the gifted and talented framework for Jades K to eight, approving the 24-25 district school calendar.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Merini?
Yes, motion passes. In the area of human resources, I would ask for the board's consideration of the following motions. Approving suspension of a staff member, approving retirements and resignations, approving of transfer and change in assignment, approving contract change, rescinding a co-curricular contract, approving a revised co-curricular advisor, approving revised mentor, approving revised leave replacement assignment, approving revised leaves of absence, approving revised appointment, approving leaves of absence, approving an increase in substitute rate of pay, motion to approve appointments, approving nurse for band trip, approving winter-site athletic supervisor, approving winter athletic coaches, approving a student/teacher, approving a mentor and buddy, approving seventh-period coverage, and approving extra coverage.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Merini?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. In the area of operations, I ask for the board's consideration of approving the following motions. Monthly financials, line item transfers, monthly bills, financial status, accepting a tuition student, rescinding the purchase of a band trailer, and then approving a resolution to purchase a band trailer, approving the disposal sale of obsolete equipment, approving the resolution for the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, approving the agreement for professional services with Marker Learning, accepting donations, and approving added district placements for 23, 24.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Merini?
Yes, motion passes. In the area of policies, I ask for the board's consideration to approve the following policies. Policies reviewed by the Education Committee for first reading and policies reviewed by the HR Committee for first reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to talk about 14.1. I obviously wasn't able to attend the last Education Committee meeting, so I didn't get to discuss these policies at the committee meeting, but I think given some, also misleadings about the policies and unexpressed lack of communication, might be good to get some feedback from the HEA for the next committee meeting, and then we can discuss the feedback and make any changes if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Okay, seeing no others, I guess we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Merini?
Yes, motion passes.
All right, we'll now move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome members of the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods at a time. The meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that the member of the public feels may have been a concern of the residents of the school districts for violation of 0167. Before you say your comment, we ask to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions, but rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board, in cases where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times where a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions, calling out the Department of Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees and companies that are ended up, and the board discuss personal issues in public session.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I just want to return to my previous concerns noted on 14.1. Recognize that the board passed that. Offer a bit of clarity, clarification for the board to consider as you move towards a second reading on that one. To claim that these are unique to each building is somewhat not factual. I spoke to some of the folks who made this. They were given a list that was largely made for them when they got there. So stakeholders, at least my stakeholders, weren't fully engaged in this, and that's evidenced by the fact that if you look at the policies, there are diminutive differences between the three of them, but they are largely the same, and the language is exactly the same. So there were shopping lists that things were picked from. The concerns that I have is, like, do I recognize that some teachers were involved in this yet? I don't, you know, I applaud them for wanting to be involved in that collaborative decision, but there are aspects of this that are terms and conditions of employment. So you're publicly admitting that you engaged in a form of negotiation with my members or got really close to it, which is something that concerns me and something that could have been discussed outside of this meeting, yet here I am. You know, and when you say parents were involved, which parents? Did we have a sampling of parents from economically diverse backgrounds? Did we have parents who English is not their first language, and we provided them a means to communicate on this effectively? Because they're the ones who actually will be subject to this policy, not necessarily the parents who have the ability to come to a daytime meeting or serve in a different role because their job allows them to do that. So did we actually have the real stakeholders involved in this? And, I mean, look, I'm sorry, I have to smile, smirk, whatever you want to say when you say that's why we have two policy readings, because in August, we passed a policy with one reading. We passed the sick leave policy. We were told that there were going to be corrections made to it. It has not shown up on a board agenda. We have voiced our concerns repeatedly to it and possibly have a meeting this week to discuss it. So there's been a number of issues related to policy, and I appreciate what the board is trying to do here, but we need to do better in discussing things before we're in this room if it impacts people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Leisha Guevara-Belis, I live in Hillsborough. At the August 22nd Board of Ed meeting, a political candidate spoke during public comment. After the meeting, I chatted with him as I wanted to know his thoughts on the 2% cap, especially for growing towns like ours, and to learn about the bill he wished had passed. He encouraged me to contact him, and I reached out to him in multiple ways since then. However, I have not heard back. He mentioned in his speech that this bill would have helped districts like Hillsborough. It's possible he was referring to Bill S. 3950, which, as noted on NJLEG, the state website, establishes exemption from state school aid reductions for certain school districts. Based on the criteria I could find, unfortunately, Hillsborough would not have benefited from this bill. While the state aid loss was not able to be reversed, I am thankful that our current lawmakers, including Senators Wicker and Roy Fryman, were able to negotiate 2/3 of the loss back this year. As a related note, I went to Trenton this past spring to give ideas about what would help our town, and I'm more than willing to talk with anyone about new proposals that would benefit Hillsborough and other towns. As you may know, much of the state aid we receive is the result of three basic factors: enrollment, property values, and income from like 1040s. If anyone has any other ideas, please reach out, and let's talk about it. You can find me on Facebook. My name is Leisha Guevara-Belis, or you can find me through my Facebook page, All Things BOE. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no one else, I will close public comment, and we'll now move to any board discussion. But I think before any board member speak, our student representative has something that he'd like to share.
Thank you. I just have two main points I want to emphasize that's happening at the high school, with the first one being an event that happened a couple weeks ago, actually, which was the pep rally, and I want to emphasize the success of this. I think it was the first time this year in over 20 years that we held the pep rally, and it essentially highlighted our sports teams and our clubs at the high school, and it was, it gathered all of our students, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade within school to have just a bonding session with all of our clubs, all of our activities. And I think I want to emphasize that it's really important that we have activities such as this, because it's one of the few times that we can gather the entire high school student body within school, because even with activities such as football games, it's really hard to gather the entire student body, but if it's within school, we can have really everyone attending. And I really want to say thanks to all the student council and all the teachers that made this possibility. And for my second point, I want to talk about a club that's been, that many people have been talking about within our high school. Many students have come up to me talking about interest in a club called Skills USA. And to provide some background, it's essentially a club that's popular within trade schools such as the Somerset Votec School that has this club, and it highlights various events such as Quiz Bowl and events like that. And I think that is a topic of consideration, because it would really be beneficial to our entire student body as, has many useful skills that people can learn. And I believe the club already has an advisor, so it is pending board approval, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any other board members that'd like to make additional comment before we close the meeting? Ms. Stats?
This will be quick. Okay, the good news is that they're doing lighting and sound upgrades in the auditorium. The bad news is that means the auditorium's not available, but the good news is the theater program is putting on a Renaissance Fair, which will be this Sunday, November 5th, from 10 to 4:00, and it'll be indoors, and there's something for all ages. They're going to have, I think, one act plays on, I think, just one stage now, and lots of little booths and activities, a lot of it will be for children, but for, like I said, for all ages. So it'd be great if people can come out.
That's great.
It'll be in the commons as well as, I think, a couple hallways.
At the high school?
Yes, at the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Stats, for that thing. Any other board members? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you, everybody. Remember to vote.